Hello, the special work session of the Annapolis City Council for Thursday, January 18th, 2018 will be called to order at 3:04. At this time, will everyone willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation in its full liberty and justice.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is a presentation, which is an elections debriefing. The ID number is 3-18.
With the members of the Board of Supervisors of Elections and representatives from -- oh, sorry, actually, we're not doing that. I think we're going to do two first, don't we?
Oh, no, I think we're good.
Okay.
We're good, yeah.
So we're doing that? Thank you. How are you doing?
Thank you for inviting us here today. We have a number of things to just review briefly with you and then entertain questions that you have. I'd like to first introduce everybody. I'm Eileen Leahy. I'm the Chair of the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Yes, my name is Arnold Smith.
Hi, Cliff Myers.
David Garris, Deputy Director, Anaromos County Board of Elections.
Joe Torre, Director, Anaromos County Board of Elections.
Seems like a long time ago that I was sitting in front of you asking for permission. Thank you.
You've done well.
Yes, well, congratulations to everyone. Arnold, Cliff, and myself came on the Board of Supervisors of Elections in July of 2014, following a very spirited election in 2013. At the time, we worked with the Ad-Hoc Committee in terms of looking at some of the positives and the negatives from the 2013 election and trying to make some recommendations in terms of city code. At the onset, we also were looking at the city code as a whole. One of the challenges, I think I speak for the three of us, is all three of us were new to this position. So it was a bit of a learning curve in the beginning in terms of the city code. We primarily set out mostly to tighten up a number of things, little things like change close of business to 4:30 and just kind of get our heads around the code a bit. We did make some changes that went through along with some of the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Probably the most, or the biggest one from the Ad-Hoc Committee was changing the absentee ballot process to a no cause or no reason. Before, you had to meet one of four criteria in regards to asking for an absentee ballot. And so I think, as you'll see in various reports, that did increase quite a bit from about 335 to about 500 in terms of the ones that were cast. There's still a lot of work to be done. We've included in some of your packet of information, if you haven't gotten it yet, we'll be getting it, some of the general topics that we see that need to be addressed over the next couple of years before the next election. One of the things we did look at and one of the things that I think is one of the pri -- two of the priorities is to really look at the city code and look at it in terms of consistency both with the state and the county. That will help a lot and also to, in terms of starting a memorandum of understanding with either the county or whoever will be doing the election. I think I speak for all of us in that this being the first time that we worked with the county, it was a positive experience. As some of you may have heard, I always thought that we were kind of dating for a while and getting to know each other. We -- I'm not sure we're ready to go steady yet, we'll see. That's not really our decision, I think, but it overall was a positive experience.
I'm ready to go steady.
In your packets, and again, you may -- you have them, okay. We did include some topics of review for the 2018, which really covers the past four And we'll be meeting tonight and might make some other recommendations later. This will be included in an overall report to the City Council that we will be discussing tonight at our regularly scheduled meeting and will be sending to you all. Following that is just an election summary. One of the things that we did with the county after the primary election and after the general election was to meet, not just with Joe and David, but really the whole staff and to really get down to some of the details that needed to be addressed, including emails and the types of things. So I think going from the primary election to the general election, you did see a number of changes there. Overall, you know, our humble opinion is we thought things went pretty well. I can go through some of the summary if you'd like me to, or if you just want to entertain questions. Hmm? I know one of the -- oh, one of the concerns was polling places. We did have some changes with the polling places this year. Our hope is that the polling places will remain constant for the 2021 election. We're, you know, people would like to do the schools, but that's probably not going to happen. And so if we can at least maintain consistency in the city polling places, I think that will help. I have to give kudos to the City MIT Department for getting the address lookups done. We did include some of the statistics for that, which I thought was very interesting. I believe the GIS application had, what is it, 2,600 hits? Let's see, I think I have it on page two. The GIS application had 2,815 hits and the PDF lookup had 2,608. It's a lot of people looking up their polling places, but the information was there. If you look at, one of the things that we did notice that really helped going from the primary to the election, to the general election, was getting the public and the election judges and others to call the help desk instead of calling City Hall or calling somewhere else. So we did have a number of things and that's also outlined in your summary. We had fewer calls in terms of people looking for polling places overall, but we still have a lot of people that aren't residents that want to know where they can vote. I couldn't believe somebody from Garrett County who had a home, a second home here, called, wanted to know why they couldn't vote. So that's something that I think we could improve in communications in the future. But overall, you know, you're going to have people with a 21401 and a 21403 address that if they're non-city residents, they're going to ask the question. So it creates interest if nothing else.
If I may. I just wanted to expound very briefly on one of the points that Eileen has already made, and that's in regard to the use of the county. You know, this is an entity that runs not just one election every four years, they run many elections every four years and --
We have an election every year.
Yeah, yeah. And so being able to use an entity that is, you know, they're never stale. And that's not a negative in regard to all the hard work that has always gone on from the city to handle the elections. But that's what their job is, day in, day out, is running elections and it's a team that does it on a regular basis. So as this City Council works its way through, I know a lot to do and a lot to learn over the course of the next year. One of the topics that will be of interest, of course, will be, you know, repeating and using again the expertise of the county to assist with handling the logistics of Annapolis City election. And then secondly, just to reiterate one of the comments that Eileen made when you take a look at Annapolis City Elections, there probably isn't much that you can do about it, but all those calls that do come in, it's because there's a great deal of confusion. We live in somewhat of an island in a way and everybody around us thinks they live in Annapolis City because so many things around us are called Annapolis. So tremendous amount of the calls and issues and questions that arise and a considerable number of the provisional ballots that get placed during the primary and the general are all people that are in there saying, "I want to vote," but they don't live in a city. So it's always an interesting issue that we arise, that we come across in every election. But that's it. I just wanted to expand on those two, those two points. I know there are a couple of folks here who had the opportunity to observe the canvas process and I think, you know, the comments were favorable as they observed, you know, how that was handled. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Alderwoman, Attorney.
Yes, thank you very much, Eileen. And can I just say that I love Joe Torre? Not the --
Thank you.
New York Yankees. Anyways, my question is related to provisional ballots and that kind of difficult situation. What was the feedback on, I believe you told the voters when they come in, that their vote would be counted or could you speak a little bit about that and if there were, you know, a path forward for improvement?
Well, we did, we did training and we actually did additional training and I believe on, in your summary, under the provisional ballot information, election judges were instructed not to tell provisional ballots at the polling place if their ballot would count. Really what they wanted to do is not to get into a confrontation and just say, "You can have a provisional ballot, it will be up to, you know, the canvas." There was something in here that they were instructed to say, that all provisional ballots will be reviewed and canvassed by the Board of Elections at the provisional ballot canvas and voters can call the Anaromos County Board of Elections office to find out the disposition of your provisional ballot 10 days after the election. So this was a script that was provided to all of provisional ballots, also to try to have some consistency, because in the primary, we did note there was some inconsistency among wards. So hopefully that helped.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderwoman, Henson.
One of my issues with the election code is that right now, if a person, if a candidate is, if one candidate feels that another candidate is violating the code, that the real only remedy is to wait until the election is completed and then if a candidate is defeated, the defeated candidate and/or 10 persons from that ward can then take that to court, take the grievance to the circuit court. One of the things I would like to see us do is to build in some sort of remedy that can happen in real time. How would you feel about the Board of Elections having some sort of quasi-judicial authority where they can maybe impose a sanction or some sort of fine or have some ability where a person can have their grievances addressed in real time? How would you feel, what's your comfort level with the Board of Elections being able to address some of those things in real time?
Well, I think, I think, first of all, actually in our general topics, we did kind of address that in terms of challenger and watchers and with, with general conduct, because our city code is very vague. County code and state is much more specific. In fact, you know, they have a whole booklet and they have training in terms of challengers and watchers and also we could look in terms of candidates. There is an opportunity for any complaints to come to the Board. Our meetings are the third Thursday of every month, they're open. We rarely have anybody attend them other than us. I think in this last election, there was a confusion or the use of the word "challenge" in terms of the election when it was a complaint. And so there was some splitting of hair, splitting of hairs, one might say. It also, we can make some, we can make some recommendations per the current city code. We actually reviewed that with the City Attorney, with Gary Ellison, but we need facts. We need information. And in terms of some situations that came up either through email or someone at the Board, that was lacking and that was a difficult, that made it difficult for us to do. So I'm not sure, I agree that I think things need to be changed and tightened up, but I'm not sure that giving us any more power would necessarily change that, but that would certainly be something to look at.
Yeah, I think, quite frankly, that there needs to be a more process of getting people educated before you get out there and start electioneering and doing the things that politicians do to get elected. We need to make sure that we, as a Board, get everybody on the same page so everybody knows what the rules are. I think that was probably part of what happened during this last election. If everybody knows what the rules are, because we're all adults here, right? If we know what the rules are, then we should be, all be able to play. I don't think Annapolis is the kind of city where we necessarily, to answer your question more directly, need to come down on anybody in a particular harsh way. And in particular, during those times when we're close to the election, I don't know what difference it's going to make anyway. Now, having said that, I do believe that the Board needs to have some authority to make it known to those people who might be violating certain interests in the election, that we should be able to, so to speak, like, listen, this is against the rules. But yet and still, going back to my initial point, we need to make sure everybody knows the rules.
As was mentioned, one of the primary objectives for 2018 is indeed to continue a more serious review and it's not that the review in the past wasn't serious, perhaps a bad adjective to use, but a more in-depth review of the code in its comparison to both the county and state and other jurisdictions. And already, Joe and his team have been helpful on that and I know will be very helpful in the future in terms of how to best adjudicate and look at where those improvements can be made. I don't know if you have any thoughts about what you've seen in those kinds of conflicts as they arise with the use of county or state code?
Yes, if you're going to, one of the first recommendations I could make is, and my Board wanted me to say this, is that you could align your elections with the presidential election and we'll run your election for you at no cost. You can align with the presidential. Baltimore City just did that. The other comment I have is you need to take a serious look at your code and bring it up to, look at the state code. David and I are willing to help. We've scrubbed your code, we know where the problems are, we wrote to your attorneys, Mayor, said where there were conflicts to make sure, was we got to the elections, that both parties understood of what our roles and responsibilities are. But you do need to bring the code into the 21st century. We went over with Gary and a couple of your attorneys. You do need to have, if you keep your election here, you definitely need to have a challenger and watcher document that lays out the rules for folks that give us problems on election day. In our elections, we have, we have your police department that actually works with me, your police chief for our precincts that we have countywide in Annapolis. I have special ops with the Anaromos County Police Department that works with me. And if we have a disturbance at a polling place, we have 200 polling places in the county, we actually, we call the police over, whether it's a candidate or a citizen, and we remove them from the precinct and tell them, "Get outside the 100-foot mark and stay there. Next time you cross over, the police is going to come here and we're going to move you out." So those are things that can be done without, you know, without penalties, but it works, it works.
Yeah, if I, if I might chime in, I'm sorry, excuse me, if I might chime in once again, Joe, this is where we break up. I truly believe that we have to have a solid Board here in the city of Annapolis. Aligning ourselves directly with the county could perhaps start to dwindle our anonymous autonomy here in the city of Annapolis. That is something I'm vehemently against. We need to keep our jurisdiction intact here in the city of Annapolis. This is a special jurisdiction. And I would argue that that is a position that I'm hoping we will not get to, but having said that.
But I think that just went up in the priorities on the general topics we'll look at tonight because it's there. Does that answer your question?
I don't want us to limit ourselves to poll watchers and challengers. Broader issues too, like let's say your opponent, all of their literature has no authority line and you would like someone to maybe pull that literature or, you know, enforce that rule, things like that. Or let's say your opponent raises money and doesn't report that money, things that happen in real time. We don't have a way to enforce the rules currently.
Well, real time would be to call the, would be to call the Board of Elections and would be to call the city clerk and report it, because we did have reports such as that that were investigated during the year.
And the, per the code, it appears per the code that the redress there would be that you could take it to the circuit court, but that that would have to happen after the election and that the party withstanding is a person who lost the election or 10 members from the jurisdiction.
Well, that's to challenge an election.
Okay.
Not to challenge incorrect usage of something or, I mean, so...
What's your understanding of the remedies that you have at your disposal?
Well, for instance, we did have a complaint about campaign signs not having per the authority. We went out and checked all of the signs. Now, in that case, there were two candidates that had per the authority on one side of the signs, but not on the other, which led to the confusion. But they all had it, but we did look at that. That's an example, that we did look at it in real time.
And let's say they didn't. What's your understanding of the remedies available to use?
It, I would consult with the, with the City Attorney, but it could be that they were polled.
Okay. I would like for us to make sure that those types of things, that we have bright lines on what we can do should those rules not be, not be complied with.
Yeah, you know, if I might say one more thing, elections are very exciting, you know? And some people, some people during the election process can, like, get overmotivated, shall I say.
If I could just say this, that you could, you need to look at the code and bring your candidacy and campaign finance law up to the state of Maryland. And Mr. Mayor, talk to Jared DeMarinas, I believe you know him, he's the director at the State Board of Elections. He's willing to help along with David and I to review your code and assist the city.
Thank you. And I think Gary can read the code as it stands now.
Yeah, just to, I think I can clarify a little bit with Alderwoman Henson's question. There is a section in the election code, 408070, which indicates the powers and duties of the Board of Elections. And in paragraph B of that section, it says, "The Board has the power to make all necessary rules and regulations not inconsistent with this chapter with reference to the registration of voters and the conduct of elections, including special elections. Unless otherwise expressly provided in this chapter, all questions arising with reference to the rules and regulations as to the registration of voters and the conduct of elections shall be decided by a majority of the Board." So as Ms. Leahy did indicate, I would say there were probably a dozen times or so where questions came up during the election, we got a complaint, there was investigated, sometimes letters went out and, but we resolved, I believe we resolved each and every...
Right, we were doing it in real time on both election days and in between.
Right. And they were, they were resolved informally. But you asked about whether the Board should have quasi-judicial powers. And I think that since the Board has the power to, to manage the conduct of elections, which to me means handle complaints of alleged violations, I think the Board, and then it says, "The Board shall have the power to summons judges and any witnesses involved and to require their appearance before them, administer oaths and record testimony from such judges and witnesses." That is quasi-judicial, right there, the subpoena power and the power to administer oaths and the power to take testimony. So that clearly is quasi-judicial. So it's already there. In this case, in the elections of 2017, the Board handled all the complaints in an informal manner, discussions at meetings, discussions during the canvassing that was done and didn't feel the need to get into a situation where testimony had to be taken, witnesses subpoenaed, oaths administered. But it does say that the Board has that power. So now, I agree with Ms. Leahy, it needs to be, it's, there's questions left open here too as to what exactly the Board can do and what relief the Board can impose. But to me, the relief is compliance with Title IV of the city code. And the Board can pass an order requiring compliance with Title IV because the Board manages the conduct of elections and has this quasi-judicial authority. So I think it's there, but I do agree with Ms. Leahy, there's a lot that needs to be clarified as to what the Board, you know, how the Board should be handling things under these circumstances. It does say the Board can adopt rules and regulations about the conduct of elections, not inconsistent with the code. We don't have really any formal rules and regulations. That's one of the things that the Board, you know, can do, is adopt rules and regulations. So in the event there is a complaint, it's clear what the Board, exactly what the Board can do. And Ms. Eileen, Ms. Leahy was correct when she said that the challenge thing, that's what goes to the circuit court. When someone wants to override the results of the election, challenges the results of the election, you got to go to circuit court. You can't go to the Board of Elections for that. But you can go to the Board of Elections during the course of an election cycle if you have complaints of violations. And the Board did handle them all informally, which the Board is entitled to do. And they did an excellent job, just, you know, making sure that things were, you know, conducted as, as they should be under the election. People disagreed sometimes, whether the Board actually was right or not, but, you know, I think that the Board, you know, clearly made appropriate and correct decisions during the course of the election on the conduct of the election. So I hope that, you know, answers your questions a little bit more, with a little bit more clarity. But the code, I'm just indicating this only because the code does try to, you know, handle this question that you have here. I just think there's ways to improve the language.
Absolutely, thank you. I do think it's a great start, but it's open to a lot of interpretation. I think because it specifically doesn't have any sanctions or remedies there, it does give them, it is, having the ability to regulate conduct is like the third clause in the list of things that they can do. It is in express purpose, but it is, I don't think that without the express remedies in there, that, that it doesn't leave them a lot of teeth in what they're able to do. And I think that when you are regulating conduct, the ability to impose penalties or sanctions is the only true way to regulate conduct. So I would love to see us clean that up and I do think it's a great launchpad and it gives us a great place to start from, but I do think it gives us room to grow into really firming up our election law. And I think the county's invitation to kind of show us where we are inconsistent with the county and the state law is a great invitation to kind of see where we can grow and that's a great start, a great place to start from.
Can I just make one comment? We had complaints about candidate conduct in five out of the eight wards. So it, just to kind of give an overall view, and many times it's quite subjective. And again, when we have those sorts of things, we really depend upon firm information and factual information. And we did notice a change, we did do some training from the primary to the general in terms of the, the chief judges, so there was much better documentation if there were things that were happening that day. We also sent out a reminder in terms of candidate conduct to all of the candidates, kind of reiterating some of the expectations. And that did make, we didn't see the same types of things. But I think it's important to realize that it wasn't just one particular area. It was five out of, five out of the eight wards and anywhere from, I mean, it ran a broad spectrum from, you know, somebody's parking in a voter spot to somebody's taking pictures, some, you know. So there is also a wide variety of subjective information in regards to what people think of in terms of conduct. So I just want to put that out there also.
Just one other thing, Alderwoman Henson. In section 448, 210 of the election code, there is a, there is indicated that a person who's violating an election law upon conviction is guilty of a misdemeanor. So we don't necessarily want to get into anything like that. There's got to be some remedy that's short of that because that's something that would, that you go to district court for and you take, you know, you know, a three-month process or something like that. And it's not realistic and to have other remedies available, to not have other remedies available, so that's something I think it's a good idea to work on. What are the lesser remedies that the Board can do? Something short of this, because that's kind of, you know, going to an extreme, I think, sometimes when you have, you know, a minor... to an extreme, I think, sometimes when you have, you know, a minor, a minor deviation from the law here, if you're found guilty, it could be a misdemeanor. I mean, we're looking at something that is, you know, either, like, more injunctive type relief that the Board would have, hey, you gotta do this, you gotta do that to correct that. Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, the county for stepping in and helping us. I know we elected to move to that, to, you know, work with you on that. You may also recall that we had a very vivid discussion about whether to change our election cycle. And this body chose to maintain our independence and therefore to keep the focus during the election on the city election. And to our election committee, you guys are volunteers. And so double thank you for all of your hard work for the last three or four months, I guess it took, to put everything in place for our primary and our general. And I, I think this was probably a very difficult election, not just for us, but for you guys, because there were some issues that we're not familiar with, we're not accustomed to having in the city. And so, you know, as I'm, we're talking about this and I'm thinking, what can we be doing? Maybe a campaign candidate 101 handbook that goes along when the person comes to file with the city clerk, that they get a little handbook that lists the do's and the don'ts, you know, proper etiquette in running an election and being the candidate in an election. Because there's no question, there were some things that were done that were very inappropriate, and I'm sure you heard most if not all of them. But some way to educate those who are interested in running of their responsibilities as a good candidate. And I think that will help clean up some of, of our issues, well, at least I hope so. Ms. Alderwoman Henson hit on some excellent points with, how do we hold people accountable when they deliberately misrepresent, for example? And we don't want to go to court because somebody lies, but there should be some repercussion when that happens, especially in an election. I mean, hopefully, we're electing the best people, and we should know who, what the caliber of the people are with whom we're electing. My other issue is, and it's not an issue, the provisional ballots, and I've kind of looked through, just skimmed through, and I saw about 45. Was, was that inclusive of all the others that were thrown out? You know, I know there were a lot from, in my ward, from outside of the county. So is, was that inclusive of everybody, or did that not include those that were just thrown out?
Well, the summary total, why don't you, you took those notes. Cliff was our secretary that day.
So, you know, for the general election, you know, there were total, it's on the, I don't know if y'all have this in front of you, but 191 provisional ballots were the total provisional ballots that were received. And of those 191, 69 of those were accepted in full. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the terminology, accepted in full, accepted in part. You know, in full means that the ballot was good, it was marked right, as regards both the automatic and the mayoral elections, and so we were able to accept those in full. They were registered voters, they were timely in that respect. 27 were only accepted in part, which would mean perhaps they only voted for one entity, or there were some where they actually voted for two. And since we cannot divine which one they wanted to, so in some cases, may have been clear in the mayoral, but not clear automatic or something. And then there were 95 which were rejected entirely, and most of those were rejected either, again, for the same reasons as occurs in a primary, they're not city residents, or they were registered late or removed too late beyond the deadlines. So that's, that's how the 191 provisional ballots break out for the general election.
Okay, I didn't see the 191 number, so I figured it was higher than the 45 I found in this document, so. So again, I just want to say thank you. I think the elections ended up okay, so.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I echo my colleague Alderwoman Finlayson's comments of gratitude and thank you, and I'll add the city clerk's office to that as well, since you played an integral part in a lot of the fun absentee ballots especially, and keeping us in check with the campaign finance reports. I want to approach this as, more of like, what are the goals of election that we can improve on in terms of increasing voter turnout, in terms of continuing trust and the confidence in the voting process, and also providing, increasing access in a meaningful way to people to, the ability to vote, or to come out and vote. And so with that, I completely appreciate and respect Mr. Smith's comments about autonomy and jurisdiction, not just because you're a Ward 5 voter. But, and at the same time, how can we align better with the county and state in terms of best practices? And to your point, Mr. Torres, bringing us to the 21st century, and I can think of just through my experience with the campaign, and I'm sure some of my colleagues share this, there is a lot of areas that we could, we could improve on in terms, and I'm just thinking here right now in terms of, from the polling place lookup, so there was a lot of confusion around that, many people going to the Salvation Army instead of Fifth Moyer, like, in Ward 5 case. A lot of people were sent to, by different organizations who are trying to support the effort of more election information, looking and pulling places through the county website, let's say, which deferred from the cities. So that was confusing in some, some aspects. What I, updating our absentee ballot process, we're still, as a city, I think, and to your point of 21st century, we're still very paper-heavy, paper-reliant. So it was quite the situation to do all the paperwork around just getting an absentee ballot. Also, I think, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on this, is something I definitely will be working on, is making sure we have early voting for our next cycle. I think it's incredible that at this age we don't have early voting and we can actually only vote on one day. So I think the improvement of absentee, no contest, was a huge step forward, and I thank you for that, but I think we needed to step it up. The other part is, there were situations, for example, and relates to, to some things, I did notice, for example, which was a little weird to me, at times, police presence at the polling places, not because they've been called there for, for any ruckus or anything, but a police patrol and police, and for me, that can indicate, maybe not intentionally, but some sort of intimidation.
We actually specifically talked with Chief Baker about that and requested that, that not occur.
Great, thank you.
But it did occur in one ward.
Yeah. And then, last part I'll just mention, and again, thank you, because I look forward to working on improving this with everyone, the campaign finance laws, I think, again, it's very, very paper handwritten, and I think the county and state set the example of how we can do better reporting, so that A, it's more transparent, it's more accurate, more real time. And so I look forward to hearing those, those best practices that we can do to improve our code, and so we can align, and at the same time, we're maintaining and respecting our autonomy as a, in our local jurisdiction.
I'd like to make just one quick point. Now, I think most of what you had is kind of on our general topics list. One of the things, though, that I think that we tried to do a little bit this year and will look a little bit more, in terms of things like early voting, but also partisan versus nonpartisan elections and some of those, is really to look at research and look and make sure that it is something that is succeeding elsewhere and is appropriate for the city of Annapolis, both from, certainly primarily a voter turnout, but also in terms of finances and logistics. And so I think that that is something that, there are some kind of hot topics that are out there right now, that when you start getting into actual practice, may or may not fit as well for us, and certainly would like to be involved if there are going to be discussions with that.
Yeah, definitely. Are you referring to early voting not being...
Early voting is one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd love to dive into the discussion, but for me, there's a certain population of our community that can't turn out to vote on a Tuesday because they have to work. So...
Well, and the absentee ballot was an effort to help with that. And again, I'm not saying no to early voting, but just looking at what would be appropriate. Are we looking at five days like we do for a presidential election? Or are we looking for something scaled back? Certainly, your points about electronics is near and dear to Cliff's heart. And so looking at maybe even some more innovative ways in terms of, of doing things that maybe other places aren't doing yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if I might chime in just briefly on that point. This is going to come to a shock to everybody, but elections are going to be confusing.
There's going to be people who are not going to get it no matter what you tell them. You could drive them to the polling place and they're saying, this is not where I'm supposed to be. Don't expect elections to be perfect, I'm so sorry. It's just not going to happen.
Okay.
We strive, you know, our office works under 100% perfection.
That's why you're breaking up again.
We're together again, I'm sorry.
We can't have a name spell wrong, a ballot, you know, when, when we get your voter registration application, I have to make sure my date of entry folks are putting in the date of birth right, spelling your name right. Because the worst thing I can do is on election day, have my full election judge sitting at that checking table and we can't find him.
You're going to be mad. I get the calls, you know, that, what do you mean, you can't find me? I've been a registered voter for 50 years. But we do operate under 100% perfection, you know, to make sure we have a, a good, solid day. But I wanted to make a point about the voter lookup site. We had a lot of difficulty with that. We work with Sean Wampler, you have an employee here that works with your GIS department, wonderful, she's a very intelligent lady, she helps us with, when we're doing redistricting down here in Annapolis. So we redistrict every 10 years after the census, and the State Board of Elections has a voter lookup site. And we had a lot of confusion because your voters wanted to come to the state lookup site. Well, the data's there, because you'll notice if you, when you, if you live here and we send you a new voter's card, we have your precinct for the countywide elections, and then your precinct is there for Annapolis City election, you're, we call it a municipal election. I have approached the State Board of Elections to have them turn that on. We have the data, they just need to turn it on. So before you all spend the money in your department, I would say that the city needs to approach Linda Lamone at the, at the State Board of Elections and get her to turn that on. Because your elections, you know, your election is very important, because you have 27,000, approximately 27,000 registered voters. In the, in the election official world, it's a big election. And how I compare that is, when you go to the shore counties, Kent County has 12,000 registered voters, Caroline County has 18,000, Talbot County has 22,000, you have a lot of registered, it's a metropolitan area, so it is a very important election. The more that you can do for your citizen where they can go to a website and look it up, your IG department should step up and do that and partner with the State Board of Elections as much as you can, because it's, it's already built, it's already there, so.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for your incredible amount of work and time you put into this, and also your patience. I know it's difficult working with stressed-out candidates on election day. And I've got to say, all the complaints that, you know, that at least, I know I had a few, and everything that I made known to you were, they were addressed, and very thorough, and again, patient response, so thank you for that. I feel like, you know, the concerns were addressed. I do have one suggestion about signage, in particular, for my ward, people are used to voting at the school, and I did receive some complaints that there wasn't, you know, they went to the school but didn't see adequate signage to get over to where they should be. And also that they spoke to some school officials who weren't quite relaying the correct information. So that'd be one area, if we have the county involved, if you could help with coordination, I think, with the county school district and also the fire department, to make sure that they're aware of...
Yeah, we did it in the primary, and for some reason, I know there was something at Tyler Elementary, either it was in place where we thought it should be placed, I mean, that's a good point, and we did, we did try to do it, but we didn't have a problem with the primary, but there was at least one that we were aware of for the general election, so.
Okay, thank you. And also, since, well, another, I haven't seen any, I don't see any recommendations in here about finance, the campaign finance laws. And, and I mean, I just, I'm curious if, you know, are you going to provide any kind of summary about recommended improvements? Because I, I just learned this morning that, you know, Preserve Annapolis violated our campaign laws. And, you know, what that happened during the election, presumably nothing could have been done about it. We know now what's going to be done about it. How can we avoid that in the future? That's kind of what I'm...
Well, that's one of our priorities, is certainly the campaign finance reports, not just the reports, but enforcement and, you know, what we can do. And we've, there's a number of organizations that need to be addressed, but it's somewhat, we're somewhat limited currently.
Okay.
But I agree with you, it's, it's important.
And my last question is sort of, in light of a recent election in Virginia, where they had a drawl name out of a hat, just curious, what, what does Annapolis do per the code when there's a tie?
Walk the plank.
A tug of war?
Gary, I don't know, I don't think we...
I don't think we have anything in there addressing that, because it's so unlikely. I'm not sure they, in Virginia, that that's the way it actually played out, because I think there was, so, the Democratic candidate went to court to, to have, to ask the court to not count that last vote that made it a tie. The last vote was, was a can, you know, the canvas, the allegation is that the canvassers, the Board of Elections, who turns into canvassers, should not have counted that vote. And it had to do with things that we faced. It had to do with, I think, both candidates were marked, and then there was a line through the Democratic candidate, and it was, and that was counted as a Republican vote, and I think it's in court right now. Unless I've, I haven't, you know, completely followed it, but that's the last I heard about it, but we do not have anything that will adjust that.
So that, certainly that, there's also, there's a lot of little things, but I think that's certainly something to add to the, to the list.
All right, well, I think you, oh, sorry.
Just one more comment, thank you. I guess it was last spring, we had a tour of the facility, and maybe my timing is off, but I thought that extremely helpful. And I would hope that the new members of the council would have the same opportunity, because sitting here, we have no clue all that's entailed and the high level of security that is required with the election process. So, you know, when the time is right to offer that to folks who haven't had a chance to visit the facility in Glen Burnie.
Certainly, everyone's invited. We just moved to a new building, we have a state-of-the-art facility for programming voting systems and storing them and maintaining them. We also, as you said, we have a very secure office. No one makes it through the, they have to buzz themselves in. If they have a backpack, we tell them, take it back to their car, we have it there for. So we're all trained on those things. But everyone, please, I invite every citizen to come, look at our facility, and as we're doing the tour, we kind of explain what we do, because that's where election officials lack, is the understanding of the citizens. You all understand what, what it takes to operate an election between a primary and a general, and nobody knows what we do, including my county council. So it's tough.
We're not going there.
It's tough, it's tough.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that just got me thinking of something that I remember occurred on election night during the general, and maybe you can address it, because I'm confused as to exactly what happened. But there were some wards, some precincts, where after the voting ended, they were, they released the numbers right away, and there were other wards that had a long delay, and there were, there was a lot of confusion around of some officials saying that they were going to take the ballots and count them in Glen Burnie and not here, and there were some wards doing that, some wards weren't. There was a lot of confusion around that, there was a lot of distress creating because of that being created. So can you address that?
I, I don't think we got a call about that as such. It would have been helpful if, if there was something, again, the help desk. Everything was brought up to the county, the totals on the wall.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't release them.
Yeah, we, we do have, you know, we hire 3,500 election judges for our 200 precincts. And we do have some election judges that want to run the election their way, not our way. And what we do is, when we take a call, that they're not hanging them up, we call right away. And also, we have rovers, we had a rover, so I had employees down here going between the precincts, they round robin all day. And I can call him on his cell phone and get him over there, say, okay, get in there and tell him, hang those up, rovers are having problems. But you're right, we do have a problem with election judges, sometimes they don't want to follow the rules. follow the rules, or they just forget. We run them through a four-hour class, so.
Thank you.
One thing I just would like to, I don't wanna get into specifics, because we'll be talking about it a little bit more, but to think for the council in terms of looking at the financial impact, we don't have records, or we haven't been able to get information in the past elections, but in terms of budgeting, to start thinking about whether you wanna do it incrementally, or just wait until 2021, but they are, they can be expensive, so that's just something for you all, as you're gonna start going into budgets, that please remember elections and, and staff, and I don't think any of us can say enough about Regina, and all of the extra time and effort, and her expertise in terms of guiding us, and then along with both Ashley Leonard and particularly Gary.
If I might be able to say a final word. This is my last rodeo on the board. It's been an interesting four years, and I'm gonna make room for another volunteer. So I'm looking for a job now.
That doesn't pay.
Love volunteers.
But I'd like to say to Regina, in particular, she's the backbone of the city. I'm sorry, did I go too far? She really is. And has been for a long time, and so her talents are, are very well documented. And to you newly-minted board members and mayor of the city, we just elected you to do what those of us who sit in the audience cannot do. We've elected you to be responsible for the city. We just celebrated one of the greatest birthdays that we'll celebrate in this country, besides the birth of this nation, that of Martin Luther King. If you remember, Martin Luther King was killed in Memphis, Tennessee, fighting for the least of us, trash workers, who, if I'm not mistaken, were getting paid a dollar, dollar fifty, maybe an hour, something crazy like that. I don't know if any of you have thrown trash, but it's a harrowing job. And I bring that up, because you folks, in some way, are charged with the duties and the responsibilities to make sure that the least of us are treated fairly. That would be what Martin Luther King would want from each and every one of you who are elected officials. My father, who not only was my personal hero, but one of the reasons why I sit here today, he uttered these words to me 35 years ago. He said, "Arnold, did you know that power is greater than money?" And I had to think about that. And it's absolutely true. You guys have, whether you know it or not, you've assimilated the power to change things. And I'm laying that on your feet, I'm sure you already know it, but I'm laying it again publicly, because this is my last chance to get a chance to just talk to you. There's great need in the communities. I know there, there's a great need here in the city of Annapolis, to keep Annapolis running, and tourist industries, and the city marketplace, but there are greater needs, human needs, here in the city of Annapolis. I would ask each and every one of you to make it your mission, so that you're just not sitting here and smiling and patting each other on the back, not that you do this, that sort of thing. But you would make it your mission, as Regina puts in all of her texts and emails, help And that's my final say.
Thank you. Well, we believe we can't be a great community until we make a great community for everybody, and I know all the councillors here are gonna fight for that, so we're gonna make you proud in four years. We also believe that Regina is our rock. She's the rock of the city, so thank you, Regina.
Yes.
And we just wanna thank you guys, because we have so much confidence in you, and we're lucky to have you, so thank you for volunteering. If you could just stay there for one more minute, we have one more announcement, next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is a presentation of a city council citation to the Anne Rundell County Board of Elections.
So we have a citation, and then three individual citations for you guys, just, a lot of paper. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation in recognition of your ongoing support of the city of Annapolis Board of Supervisors of Elections and the city, citizens of the city of Annapolis during the 2017 city of Annapolis primary and general municipal election. We acknowledge your significant contribution by providing staff support, dependability, adaptability, dedication, creativity, professionalism, while building personal relationships, and being an essential part of the Annapolis team. We also acknowledge that the Anne Rundell County Board of Elections staff provides a multitude of information on, on a regular basis, and whenever they were asked. Your selfless service to our community over the years is a true testament to your commitment to making Annapolis better, and we honor you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very kind, very kind.
Thank you all very much, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you, buddy. Okay, we'll take it. It's an honor. It's an honor. My grandkids love it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is ID-4-18, which is a presentation by the Partnership for Action Learning and Sustainability.
Thanks, Mr. Cutwell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pete Gull, Director of Planning and Zoning, to my left is Uri Avon, he's the director for the Partnership of Action Learning, and he'll introduce Casey and, and some of the other stuff, but by way of introduction, about two and a half years ago, Uri called me and said, "Hey, do I have, do I have an offer you can't refuse?" And I said, "I'm not sure about that, Uri," because we're dealing with the University of Maryland, it was a partnership with the University of Maryland and the county, and what we wanted to try and do is, you know, produce products through this partnership of learning in real-world applications. And I'm gonna let Uri talk about the, the program, but I, I wanted to let you know that when I ventured into this, this partnership, I wanted something that we could use, and it was sort of a working program that Tom Andrews said, "Get done, but I'm not gonna give you any money to do it." So this is how I got it done. So I'm gonna turn it over to Uri and let him talk about the program and what we've accomplished.
Thank you for making time for us to do a little presentation to you. We had done some presentations to the previous council and mayor, but we thought, given that we've not completed our work, we wanted to make you aware of the benefits and the products that we have generated through the students. So again, I'm Uri Avon, I'm with the National Center for Smart Growth at the University of Maryland, and to my right is Casey Roan. Casey's an Annapolis resident, and was a student that was one of the leaders of the project that she'll present. So I'll be 15 minutes, Casey will be 15 minutes, just giving the thumbnail of the work we've done for the city, so as to make you aware of some of the resources you now newly have that you did not have a year ago. We've had the opportunity to do this nine times now with different jurisdictions around the state, and I will tell you that for us, the experience with your study has been the best, both in terms of the caliber of the staff that we've worked with, as well as in terms of the impact we think we've had. When we work with very large jurisdictions like Anne Rundell County, who have resources, the impact of what we do is much less direct and powerful than we would when we work with small communities who have limited resources, and where we can really make a difference. So the way this program works, and it's pretty dim on the screen there, but I'm hoping you can see it, how, can you see it? Yeah, you can see it a little. Basically, we make the resources of the entire university available to the city of Annapolis. So when I talked to Pete a couple of years back, I said, "You tell us what your needs are, what your problems are, and we'll try and find faculty and courses to address your needs, whatever they may be. Public works, budget, planning, revitalization, economic development, you tell us what your needs are, and we'll try and find students and faculty that can spend a semester running around the city, and helping you collect data, do analysis, generate ideas, and make, make something, produce something useful for the city." So we've completed that. We worked for two semesters and two summers, and have a bunch of products. About 100 students participated, and as a former consultant, if I had to value the work that you, in the end, paid us about $35,000 for, I would say it's at least $350,000 worth of work. Way to have hired consultants, that's being very modest. The value and the caliber of the work is certainly professional in a level, so it was a very cost-effective investment by the city, and we hope that you will continue to use the work we've done. Let me give you a thumbnail then of, of some of the products, and, ah, wrong button, next button, wait, what do we do? What do we do? Just gonna go reverse, yeah, there we go. Okay, do that one or that one. So this was a citywide effort, and the city generated about 10 ideas. Pete and Sally and everyone talked to the various departments, and there were about 10 ideas, and we were able to essentially do seven of them, and that's what you see on the screen ahead, in front of you. These are the seven, number, four was really two projects, these are the, these are the seven projects that we undertook over a year and a half, essentially, for the city. I'm gonna walk quickly through each of them, just to give you a flavor for what we actually did. They are available on the university website, university's website, the products, and they will be available on the city's website as well, the actual reports, products, PowerPoints, and so forth. So let me start off with the first one, which is the Historic City Dock Sea Level Rise Design. This was landscape students, 20 students, they capstone project for the year, and they tackled a very difficult problem that you're fully aware of, not just the inundation with flood, but the potential for a storm surge, and how do you design against this? And they set up four teams, who produced four reports, that are really very out-of-the-box, very innovative, very exciting, and I hope will eventually influence the planning that's done for the, for the city dock area. But they, they looked at the flooding and storm surge problem, researched what other places around the world have done, Holland, other places that have had a lot of experience dealing with mitigating and adapting towards flooding and sea level rise, and produced four very interesting reports that are very different than each other. Four designs that looked specifically at the dock area and its inundation, and how you might mitigate that in different ways, and how you might adapt. This is just one of the renderings from one of the four that look, is at the end of Dock Street, which they recommended be a pedestrian street during the middle of the day, to maximize the benefit and the amenities that could be created there. So for what it's worth, these four reports are really very innovative, and I think would interest you greatly. The second project I wanted to talk about was one that specifically was sparked by, by Holly and Economic Development folks, and that is, given the changing nature of the maritime industry in the city, and the zoning that's been in place there for a long time, what's the future potential for the maritime industry, and how might that influence thinking about zoning and land use in the maritime area and maritime economy? So the studio looked at who's done what elsewhere, how the industry might be revitalized, how the spinoffs might work, what tools could be applied, and what the implications might be for zoning and planning. And again, the report is an extensive report. One of the ideas was that they, one of the ideas was that they would look at, among other things, placemaker, make-a-space, rather, make-a-space, which in innovation economies is a big buzzword, make-a-space for embryonic industries is a big deal, this is just one of the designs that the design students in the class did, but there's a lot of analysis about the industry, and there's a lot of recommendations about zoning and zoning district changes that the students offered up for, for your consideration, as well as the notion of developing a maritime development authority, looking at education, and some other aspects of the work. Then Richard Marciano, who happens to be a resident of Eastport, also is a professor in the I-School, the Information Management Program, and he had his curator, his librarian curatorship students, graduate students, take a look and help complete the partial inventory of historic structures in Eastport, working with Sean Wampler, who was mentioned earlier, and, and historic preservation folks, and they completed not only a lot of the inventory, but developed a database, a very useful and innovative database that can help you sort through and organize your thinking about the historic district in Eastport. A really very leading-edge project. This is the methodology, not gonna go through it in any way, but as you all know, when you deal with inventories of historic properties, there are lots of complications, lots of weird stuff you have to deal with when you classify. So the final product is a digitized and searchable directory of the project, there are new GIS layers, there's a complete photo inventory, there's an updated architectural survey, there's a lot of ownership documentation about parcels that have changed hands, et cetera, et cetera. Really good piece of work. I would say it's a leading-edge inventory in the state of Maryland, given, given the work that's been done. The reason primarily that I think Pete was interested in doing this whole thing, was there isn't a, an existing land use database for the city of Annapolis, there wasn't. You had no idea digitally of what land was used where, for what. You simply had no idea. You had a zoning database, but if you wanted to answer the question, how many vacant parcels less than an acre used non-commercially are available in the city of Annapolis, you couldn't do it. You couldn't do it. So this is something that they really wanted, and we launched a special summer effort to do an inventory of all the land use parcels, and then classify them in eight categories, seven or eight categories that match the counties, because we wanted to have some county-city compatibility, because they have a GIS database as well. And then for Eastport, we doubled the number of categories, because there's, as you know, a lot of complicated categories in Annapolis with mixed use and all kinds of stuff. So you have a, now you have a complete land use inventory that has been the basis, this is what part of it looks like, we defined the primary uses on the left, the secondary uses on the right, so we broke down offices into office park, office buildings, residential office, and so forth and so on. You now have this as an example for the entire city, and you have been using it. We did some analysis, my colleague, Charlie, did some analysis to look at market trends. How has land use changed in the city over the last decade, and where's the market headed in commercial, in residential, in office use? And what are the potential redevelopment opportunities? Looking at. Looking at buildings that are older, that are certain age, the comparison between the value of the land to the value of the building, and so forth and so on. So one of the little pieces of analysis that you see here, this is the Forest Drive corridor, and in blue are all parcels that are potentially redevelopable, I think, in this particular instance. And that little line is, that little beige line is a half-mile buffer along Forest Drive. So that's the kind of analysis now at the press of a button that for economic development, for public works purposes, for planning purposes, you now can do. This was also the basis for a special study that we did, looking at Forest Drive corridor and the land use redevelopment along it and the traffic impacts. And as you all know, you're currently doing a study on that very topic, but this was basic information and some early analysis to help feed that study and the kind of work that was done. This is the corridor, these are the parcels that were selected for analysis, and we looked at things like, what if there was a rezoning from single-family to townhouses, or townhouses to garden apartments? What would that do to traffic in the corridor? And what are the tipping points beyond which you begin to have serious problems? And it's basically a tool that we've left the city with to look at the relationship between future development in the corridor and transportation impacts. And this is just another map that shows you the current land uses in that corridor from the land use database. So that's just a flavor for, 15 minutes, excellent, flavor for the work we did in the last year and a half. And happy to answer one or two quick questions, if you have any, about this particular work. Again, the reports, the PowerPoints and all are online and could be in your website, but if there are no burning questions, I'll be happy to pass it along to Casey, who has graduated and is also looking for a job, same as Arnold, and was one of the leaders and key authors of this very ambitious studio project called Healthy Annapolis. So I'm gonna pass it along to Casey.
Thank you, Ari, for the introduction. And I was, as an Annapolis resident, I was really excited to have the opportunity to work on this project and to talk about it here today. So I'd like to give credit to all of the other students who worked on this over the summer with me, who couldn't be here today, whose names you see up here. And as Ari mentioned, we developed a pretty extensive report. I think it's about 170 pages, which I helped edit and took a while. And that report contains a number of recommendations that can help the city realize its healthy living goals. So as you know, Annapolis has already received some recognition for its work in this area through the Nationwide Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties Initiative. And our project was intended to further that effort by helping the city pursue four all-star strategies, which represent a higher level of commitment and achievement through the Let's Move program. And the four areas that were identified for us by the city staff were Healthy City Guidelines, Parks and Open Space, Bicycle Infrastructure, and Urban Agriculture. And the bulk of our report is made up of four chapters that have extensive research and recommendations in each of these areas. And I'm just gonna give a highlight of each of these four chapters, but I encourage you to look at the full report, because there's much more information in there than what I can share today. So our first group was Healthy City Guidelines, and they focused on ways to incorporate health into the comprehensive plan to set up a really good foundation for planning for health going forward. They used a tool developed by the American Planning Association to go through the comprehensive plan with a fine-tooth comb and to score each chapter for the presence of health-related elements on a scale from zero, not present, to two, present and well-developed. And what they found was that the plan scored well in some areas, including healthy living goals and strategies, but the overall score, which was 60 out of a possible 158, suggested there were some areas where improvements could be made. So after their analysis, they went through each chapter of the comprehensive plan and suggested areas where health goals and policies could be introduced. And I'll share just a couple examples from that. So in Chapter Three, the Land Use and Economic Development Chapter, they found that mixed-use zoning occupies only about 20 acres in the city, which is close to 0% of the city's land area, and found this to be a major barrier for healthy living. So they recommended remedying this by beginning with the Upper West Street Opportunity Area, which stretches from the West Gate Circle out to the city-county line, and to focus by starting there with mixed-use and walkable development around West Street and its major cross streets. And then in Chapter Eight, the Housing Chapter, they found that there was a lack of health policies relating to the built environment, including air quality. And they made a number of detailed recommendations for ways that we can improve the health of our building stock, including working on indoor health hazards and green building strategies, and incorporating crime prevention through environmental design into our zoning code. Each chapter also includes a number of best practices and case studies from other areas, like the High Point Project from the Seattle Housing Authority seen here. And we included a number of examples, many from comparable Maryland cities, that we thought would make good models for Annapolis in trying to implement these policies going forward. Our next group was Parks and Open Space, and they focused on doing an inventory of the city's existing resources and focusing on ways to make city residents more aware of, make city residents more aware of, and familiar with the park resources so that they could make better use of them. So they did a park inventory using city and county GIS data to map all of the 46 parks and recreation areas available to city residents, and all of the amenities that can be found in each of these parks. And the idea was to provide this updated parks and trails map and parks inventory to city residents so that they know where to find the parks and what they can do to enjoy themselves once they're there. And in the same vein, they created a number of park tours, which are modeled after our existing historic tours. And these are walking and biking tours that highlight the number of parks that we have around the city and the amenities there, so that both residents and visitors can better find these parks and go out and enjoy them. And they envisioned these park tours as promotional materials that could be included alongside other information that's provided to residents and tourists when marketing the city. They looked at park accessibility and found that only less than 25% of residential housing units are within a quarter-mile walk of a park, which suggests that accessibility could be improved. They did recommend a further analysis in this area to really assess the distribution of parks among residents to see whether park resources are distributed equitably across residents and neighborhoods around the city. And they also took a close look at the city's adequate public facilities ordinance and compared this to Mount Airy, Tawny Town, and Laurel to see how it stacked up for its inclusion of, specifically for the recreational facilities element. And they found it lacked some specificity and definition and could be strengthened as a tool. For example, they recommended a much clearer definition of the term recreational facility so that we know what we're getting, and that more well-defined expectations for developers to help ensure that quality recreational facilities are included in development and redevelopment projects going forward. Our third group was Bicycle Infrastructure, and I think they probably enjoyed themselves the most out of any of our groups. They not only did a lot of really great research, but also went on a really nice bike tour of the city on a really lovely sunny day last July, which highlighted the many, you know, health, mental health, physical health benefits of biking, as well as the environmental benefits through reduced impacts from automobile transportation. They also began by assessing current conditions and looked at the proximity of a number of different city amenities and their accessibility to bike routes and their bikability. This map shows the accessibility by bike to the city's bus stops, and they found that the three-mile bike shed around the bus stop, so that's a three-mile buffer radius basically, it contains just under 75% of residential and mixed-use addresses, which suggests that there is some fairly good accessibility for people wanting to commute by bike. However, that distance does not reflect that there's a safe route for people to travel when they're doing this bicycle commuting. And their analysis focused pretty extensively on safety and particularly crashes. This map shows, this is a density map showing the concentration of vehicle crashes involving pedestrians and cyclists. And you can see that there's a clear concentration of these crashes in the area around Church Circle and downtown. And they identified a number of similarities in these crashes that spoke to major flaws in road design that were making the roads unsafe for non-automobile commuters. So they recommended a number of traffic calming strategies and a complete streets model that would help make the streets safer for all users and not just cars. And they also recommended that when the city does its scheduled repaving projects, that they incorporate the installation of bicycle infrastructure at the same time, so that bike infrastructure is being implemented in a steady and consistent and planned-for manner going forward. They looked at infrastructure and connectivity, including looking at the nexus between bicycle infrastructure and the city's lower-income neighborhoods. And in particular, for the neighborhoods of, or the census blocks with lower income found along the periphery of the city, these are areas with more limited pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And this means that residents who may be relying on walking or biking as their primary mode of transportation have the least amount of safety and infrastructure when they're commuting out of necessity. So this spoke to a need to increase the pedestrian cycle infrastructure in these areas to provide a easier and lower-cost means of transportation that can help access, or increase access to opportunity for these areas. They looked at priority bike parking locations. If people know bike parking is available, they're more likely to choose biking as a form of travel. And they found limited bike parking outside of the historic downtown area and created a tiered list of priority census blocks for the installation of new bike parking, particularly in areas where retail, bus stops, existing bike infrastructure is already concentrated. And they also recommended an update to the adequate public facilities ordinance that would include the installation of bike parking as a requirement for new and redevelopment projects. Finally, our last group was Urban Agriculture. This was my team, and we looked at the many health benefits of urban agriculture, including physical activity, you know, mental health from being out in the green space and the fresh air, but also improved access to healthy food and nutrition. We did a preliminary analysis of existing garden assets and found only one really well-established community garden in Annapolis, and that's the garden that Grow Annapolis runs behind the Eastport Fire Station. And we also did a little bit of analysis of food retail and found that the number of convenience stores and gas stations, you know, pretty obviously far outnumber the availability of healthy food for many people. And we also tried to look at the current guidance in the comprehensive plan and city code that governs urban agriculture, but we found that there's actually no mention of urban agriculture right now in the city's guiding documents. So if the city wants to prioritize urban agriculture going forward by inserting new language into these documents, we can really set up a good framework that will encourage agriculture, but also guide it in the way we want it to go and address any potential concerns about negative impacts on the surrounding community. So we suggested a policy be inserted into the Land Use and Economic Development Chapter of the comprehensive plan that would exactly lay out all of those specifications and implementation plans for gardens going forward. We also made recommendations to update the zoning code with clear definitions of different types of urban agriculture, from home gardens to community gardens, and the specific zones within the city where each of these uses would be permitted. When gardens operate in, as they currently do, without any specific legal language, they're more vulnerable to being shut down as a non-permitted use, and this makes gardens less likely to become well-established and to flourish over time. This can also include, we also included some suggested site design requirements and operating standards, and this can govern things like where gardeners can store their compost and what hours they're allowed to use the garden, and this can help ensure that community gardens are good neighbors to their surrounding community. The biggest barrier that we've found for urban agriculture in Annapolis is the lack of available land. With only less than 3% of the city's land area undeveloped, gardens just have a hard time finding any space to operate. And it's expensive for them to lease land on the undeveloped space, because it's a low priority for those vacant lots. So to, and those costs are often passed on to users. If the garden costs a lot to operate, it costs a lot for people to use the garden, and this means that low and moderate-income people are shut out from the community gardening process. So to remedy this, we suggest that the city incentivize private landowners to actually lease to nonprofit community gardens by considering a property tax reduction or abatement if they lease to certified nonprofits. And we also encourage the city to place community gardens on public lands where costs for users are the lowest. And this in particular can include, including community gardens in the planned redevelopment of the housing authority of the city of Annapolis properties, something which the city of Frederick has done to great success. They have a very active community garden program there that includes a youth garden club and healthy cooking classes that we think, we thought would make a great model for the city of Annapolis as they consider this redevelopment project. Across all of our recommendations throughout all of our chapters, there were a number of similarities. They focus on sharing knowledge and resources with partners. We found a lot of active nonprofit organizations and advocates such as Grow Annapolis and BI triple-A, who are very knowledgeable in their subject areas. They're very excited that the city is interested in pursuing this, and they're eager to share their resources and expertise, including helping to identify possible funding sources to make some of these things a reality. Our recommendations also focus on maximizing existing assets. This is the lowest cost, and first thing we can do is to make residents more aware of the many resources for healthy living that we already have here in the city. They focus on reducing health disparities. Families living in poverty are often the most vulnerable to health problems and have the fewest resources to address them. So by focusing on increasing access to necessities like healthy food and sidewalks and to resources like parks, we can help reduce health risks for our most vulnerable residents. And finally, most of our recommendations focus on adopting a health-oriented comprehensive plan and city code, so that we're actually formalizing our support for these measures and establishing them as a foundation for all of our planning and development going forward. And we thought that, you know, we did a, we did a lot of research and put a lot of thought into this, and with all of these recommendations, I think it can establish a really solid foundation for the city to achieve these health goals going forward. And I want to thank all of you for listening and for supporting this project and for the city staff that helped us, particularly Pete, Sally, and Jen, for all of their support and all of the work they've done on this issue. Thank you.
We're done.
We want to thank you. That's excellent. How many more free reports can you do for us? Well, that's some excellent stuff, so I can't wait to dig into that. I have some questions for you, all of them, Tyrone?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. One quick, two questions. One was, I wasn't sure, there was a cost to it of some sort, correct?
Yes. We charge $6,000 per course, $5,000 per course. Sorry, it's now gone up, it's now gone up. We charge.
And one of the courses he did for free.
That's true. After our bitter experience in Annapolis, we've raised the cost.
So to segue into our next topic, I think Sally probably knows what I'm going to ask. The City Dock Master Plan had about seven studies, you know, and one of them, for example, one of them was a crosswalk study. And are these studies somehow, can they be integrated into the City Dock Master Plan? Do you know what I'm asking?
Certainly. As you look at some of the projects that Ari was talking about earlier, it does set it all up for us to have that information, that research done, and the analysis done, so we can move them into other comprehensive, other plans, but it also sets us up for the next comprehensive plan. I think what Casey was talking about in terms of some of the strategies, I think, what they did was an analysis of our code and the existing comprehensive plan to jettison some of these ideas forward. So certainly it can be integrated, but some of the data and the research can be folded into, yes, the maritime study was brought out through the resolution by the city council. After we did some of those changes to the maritime zoning, we had to do a maritime analysis, and that's what that project facilitated, was looking at zoning, looking at the land uses, and then giving recommendations and changes as to what should be done for the maritime industry. So, yeah, it has been part and parcel to other plans. I don't know specifically to the City Dock Master Plan, but there has been other uses out of these projects that can be used, that can be folded into other projects and studies, yes.
Absolutely. If it's fed to the comprehensive plan, then ideally it would then, you know, feed to the respective City Dock Master Plan.
And the sector studies, yep.
Eastport, et cetera.
The land use inventory has been used, will be used in the Forest Drive, Eastport Sector Study. It was used, I think, part and parcel to the Upper West Street Sector Study. So we were able to use that information and not have to pay another consultant to do that. We handed them the information, and that saved us money right there. So. So.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you. Saul, thank you so much. This made me really happy. You know? It's amazing, really. I was like, wow, this is amazing. So I really look forward to working with my colleagues on implementing this, your amazing study and vision and report. You know, and also congratulations on this and for graduating from University of Maryland. Pete, are you hiring?
I am.
Public declaration.
Well, I have a referral to make.
I'll be making a budget request. Right, Ross?
But I just, I'm really, really grateful for this. It's amazing, really comprehensive. I look forward to digging into the full report and working with you and the city and implementing this. So, thank you.
Alderman, Henson?
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well. Thank you for the clearly hard work that went into researching and compiling and pulling all these figures together. I can only imagine all the different sources that you all had to go through to get the information that you have. The crime prevention through environmental design that you have there, can you elaborate on that, what that means and what that entails?
So, as, that wasn't my area of focus. I don't know a lot about it in detail. Maybe Uri would be happy to explain a little bit further.
Sure. So, so the last 30-plus years, people have looked at how the design of the environment affects crime and have come up with a bunch of recommendations as to lighting visibility, where you plant shrubs and bushes, where you don't, where people can hide, where people don't hide, foyer design, lobby design, visibility. There's a whole series of guidelines that look at crime prevention through environmental design. And so we dipped into that and selected from that stuff that really was useful to the work we were doing, and that's built into it. A lot of it's in codes and subdivision regulations and site planning.
Are there examples of where that's been implemented and data on how that's been effective? Has it gone that far yet? Is it all theoretical still?
No, no. There's lots of implementation, there are lots of studies before and after, there are lots of good data, and our students looked at that, and it's certainly one of the effective ways to improve safety.
And I believe, having read this chapter, that there is a best practice or case study in this chapter that specifically talks about that.
That's excellent. I welcome the opportunity to read that and get familiar with that. Also, one of my roles on the council is chairing the Housing and Human Welfare Committee. I feel like we have a very strong focus on housing here, but the human welfare end of it is something that as a city, we don't have a strong focus on. The county health department really provides the health of the city here. That's a place where we overlap and really defer to the county, but I would love to see us as a city do more to care for the health of our residents. So your report gives us a great springboard for finding ways where we can care more for the health of the residents of the City of Annapolis. So thank you. I believe that was your particular area of focus for really highlighting ways that we can do a better job at doing that. Thank you.
You guys have a lobby owner. You have a topical report already. We sent it to you on your last, I'm Jen Jennings from Recreation and Parks. We sent this to you in your last meeting when Archie-
Jen, you leave the mic. You leave the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm Jen Jennings. I'm with Recreation and Parks and was part of this whole process of getting this done from our Let's Move All-Star Strategy. And so your last meeting that, when Archie presented to you, we in our Recreation and Parks packet supplied you all with the report. So you have it wherever, you've tucked it away. And it's good reading. It's absolutely wonderful. They did such a fabulous job and very proud to have it. The Michelle Obama letter, yeah, that's from our Let's Move campaign. And I worked very closely with Alderwoman Pind Charles and Pindell Charles, and we road tripped into DC a few times. Yeah. Yes, we did. So.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to Alderwoman Henson for that question. I would love to see our police department get more involved with some environmental design to use for crime prevention. And thank you for the excellent, excellent report. There's a lot of great ideas in there. And I did want to say as well, you know, I'd support, it's good to know the Rec Department, I need to take a look at this report in detail. If the Rec Department has any specific recommendations coming out of it, I'd like to see. But that could be, I'd definitely support even another study along the lines of looking at, as mentioned in one slide, about the access to recreational facilities. And I'm not sure if we have, or the last time we may have done some kind of overall recreation plan study for the city of all our facilities. That would, I'd certainly be interested in that idea and support that. And I'm really impressed with the work that I've seen.
One of the additional products created by the Parks team was a mobile app, which, is that active now, Pete? But it's something that people can have on their phone, and I think it has a, you know, proximity sensor basically, and it will tell you where the closes parks are. Yeah. And that's something that, is that up online now that people can access?
I believe it, I believe it maybe. I'm not 100% sure. But I think it was during the summer when we were working on the project.
And the accessibility analysis that the Parks team did was based on the location of residential housing units, but did not include the actual distribution of residents, so the actual numbers of people and where they were. So that is the next level of analysis that would provide a little bit better information in that direction.
Yeah, I would definitely love to see that incorporated into the comp plan and any kind of zoning changes in the future, whatever we can do to help provide more equity in access to the recreational facilities or open space. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to more partnerships with the University of Maryland. Good school, Pete.
I would just like to say, one of the interesting things of this whole process was the interaction with the students and us. You know, we have this sort of preconceived, this is how you gotta do it, and they would come back and say, why? You know, and you're like, well, okay, try it that way, see how it works. So it was a learning experience on both ends. We learned a little bit from them, and they learned a lot from us. And developing with the faculty and the curriculum, it was, I mean, like Uri was saying, we were dealing with a wide range of disciplines, you know, from a wide range of, you know, library science students to GI, IT students to planners, to architects, engineers, and it was, it was quite the experience from our end as well. So it was a great partnership. And also, I would be remiss to not, you know, recognize Dr. Nash. She did, she was the yeoman's effort on this, coordinating a lot of that, and Jen with this last piece. I gotta admit, this is the one part that we had to split the cost on because I was like, I don't know about this. But it turned out to be one hell of an effort and something that we looked at. I didn't realize how comprehensive this was going to be in coming back from some of the University of Maryland meetings with Sally and I saying, this is a lot of good stuff we can move forward with the Comprehensive Planning because zoning code changes. And crime prevention through environmental design is very successful, but it's almost old-school. The whole idea behind it is bringing, is activating the streetscape. And it's the, you know, it's the West Street sort of idea of activating the street, the streetscape, in order to prevent, you know, illicit activity going on. So that's the idea behind it. So, thank you all so very, very much.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, keep the next item.
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is item ID-1-18, briefing on the City Dock Master Plan.
Mr. Trader, as Director of Recreation and Parks, thank you so very much.
I'm just gonna turn this over to Sally.
Aren't you gonna do your joke?
Before you get started, Dr. Nash, as a matter of total transparency, I did serve on the City Dock Master Plan Commission.
That's right, you sure did.
I certainly did. Got roped in by my old boss.
That's right. All right, good afternoon. I'm Sally Nash, planning and zoning. I was, we were asked to do a update on the City Dock Master Plan and what parts of it have been implemented since its original adoption in October of 2013. So I'm going to briefly summarize the plan. There was a 30-minute, 30-member City Dock Advisory Committee made up of citizens, including Alderwoman Pindell Charles before she was the Alderwoman. And it was, the work was done in two phases over a two-year period. So the first phase was developing the visions and guiding principles. The second phase was working on the plan itself. And the five main principles that had been developed in the first phase became the basis of this plan. Through the adoption process, there were four studies that were incorporated into the plan that needed to be undertaken as the plan was implemented. So the first guiding principle is the gradual improvement with emphasis on maintaining the integrity of the landmark district, including historic layout scale and vistas. And the idea behind this is to not make a lot of changes at once, but to look at the obstacles and to see if there's small things we can do that would really make a big difference. The most obvious of these probably is to look at the sidewalks we have. Here are the existing sidewalks. And if we're just talking about Dock Street for now, we know the obstacles. Many of the sidewalks are very narrow, in addition to other issues such as there being a lot of parking and not being a lot of shade. But, so if we're looking at this side of the street, the sidewalks here are very narrow. We know what this looks like. So the plan imagines, well, what if the sidewalks look like this? You know, if they were wide enough, we could have a lot more activation of the space, you know, have room for more people to dine outside. And there are other obstacles, like I mentioned, including this one where there are wide sidewalks, but there's not a lot of shade, it's not as welcoming. However, one thing we have to consider when we're making any improvements to City Dock is the important views that are part of this part of town, so not just the structures themselves, but also the view sheds. So one study that was incorporated into the project was to look at view sheds, including this one, which is one of the primary view sheds in the city from Upper Main Street looking out into the water. In order to protect these views and also to prioritize them, a cultural landscape report was called for. This project would be two parts, part inventory of what there is, and the second part would be the study itself and an analysis of the inventory and how, which view sheds and structures had the priority in terms of being protected in the future. So the status of this report is that it is, we have done a significant portion of the inventory itself. So we have the report remaining to do. There is money in the budget to finish this. I think it can be finished in the next few months. Now going over to the Compromised Street side, we had certain studies required that looked at, that looked at changes in the maritime industry. So for example, what you just heard about in the PALS class, we, Holly over here, worked with, just kidding, Hollis, worked with the PALS program to do an economic maritime study that looked at what's changed in the maritime industry, how can we prepare for the future for the maritime industry? It was really focusing on new technologies and new strategies for, that can be used in our maritime study, which has moved away from the more industrial kind of uses to a more, to possibly a more technological-based industry. That would be very exciting. So this plan is completed. Other obstacles on the Compromised Street that were identified in the plan include lack of street definition, again, lack of crosswalks, high travel speed along Compromised Street, and of course, localized flooding. The plan tackled this issue of existing parking lots and thought, how can we reimagine some of these spaces? Any discussion of removing parking is controversial, so a study to look at comprehensive parking was added to the plan. And SP Plus has completed this comprehensive inventory, and we can use that to help address such issues as, what if we take away parking from certain areas? What if we take it away, not permanently, but temporarily, so we can use the spaces we have for events in a way we can't use them for now? So, you know, the space around Market House, what if we take away parking temporarily and use that for open space for an event or, you know, some kind of special occasion? Talking about market space, marketplace, there was a lot of analysis there of traffic patterns and how that worked. There was several studies called for, related to this one, that have to do with traffic engineering. So of those, one was looking at the optimal configuration of Compromised Street, Main Street, and Randall Street, so i.e. the circle, which was also very controversial and never really resolved in the plan of how that intersection could be improved and what would the changes, what would they imply for the historic district and the historic nature of that memorial circle. There was also a crosswalk study called for to look at better ways to have pedestrian movement. Now, Public Works has not formally worked on either of these projects. I think informally, they have looked at the crosswalks to see if there's any ways to improve it, and they're, they're looking at it now too, to see, you know, especially that Randall Street and Dock Street, there are so many pedestrian conflicts there on the weekends. I know Director Gerald is looking at how we can improve the operations there. So this shows the proposed T-intersection. As I mentioned, a lot of pedestrian conflicts and a space just very dominated by vehicular One of the other guiding principles of the plan was greening and sustainability, and this became especially important when talking about sea level rise and nuisance flooding, which we're addressing, we've been addressing now the past few years with the bulkhead replacement and the grants that we're pursuing. We know storm flooding is going to be even more severe than the nuisance flooding. The study related to these was on sea level rise, and we have made a lot of progress on these. We've done the cultural hazard mitigation, Cultural Resource Hazard Mitigation Plan, which has been drafted and is being refined. We also, I know Public Works has also spent a lot of time analyzing the nuisance flooding and are doing the work on the pump stations that will help alleviate some of those issues. The final guiding principle in the plan was to look at public art and to work with Arts and Public Places Commission on how to strengthen the city's role in making sure there was enough opportunities for public art, especially in City Dock, but also citywide. So the last study that would be required before implementation of the City Dock Master Plan is called a Business Climate Study, and this was envisioned to protect existing businesses from any potential- And this was envisioned to protect existing businesses from any potential changes that might come from implementing the plan. And we have not done this study, but our Economic Development Manager could do this study whenever we have a clear idea of what the changes might be down at City Dock. So we have the ability to do the study, but we just need more details before we can do it. All right, any questions?
Alderman Henson.
There seems to be a lot of competing interests when it comes to the downtown area. Like, our visitors think it's not enough parking, but then locals think there's nothing but parking lots down there. People who live here think, like, public housing residents have a perception that the city is willing to bend over backwards to spend money and pour it into downtown, but not invest in public housing. People who live here think it's a traffic jam and they avoid it at all costs, but people who are not from Annapolis think that everyone lives in downtown. And when they say you're running for office, well, what part of downtown Annapolis are you from? There's a lot of competing interests there. So how do you go about defining goals for the City Dock Master Plan?
Well, I would say that this plan put forth a vision of City Dock Master Plan that had support of a lot of citizens and a lot of members of City Council. I mean, obviously, it was adopted. But at the same time, there was a lot of concern that the implementation would happen too quickly. And that, that's really how these studies kind of got built into the plan, to make sure that the changes didn't happen without the ability to evaluate the effect of the changes. So I think that it's really an issue of politically for the council to prioritize what they want to see, how they want to implement it, and then to move forward and think, how can we evaluate the impact of these changes? I mean, there are going to be winners and losers if there are changes. There's going to be winners and losers if there aren't changes. But, you know, there has to be a political commitment to the vision and, in order to move forward with the tough and competing issues.
So the goals were defined by the consensus of the council?
The guiding principles came from the committee. But the plan was adopted by the council at the time.
Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Nash and Peter, for putting this together. I think it's very important. Three questions. The first one is, what is the status of the City Dock Master Plan as far as implementation? And this goes to my second question is, do the studies have, can the studies be redefined? And three, how is this currently used as an enforcing document, or if it is at all? You know, for example, I haven't hidden the fact that I was upset about the promenade at 110 not being 15 feet per the City Dock Master Plan, but then I, you know, I learned that the bill, you know, it is per code. And so therefore, there is this, you know, for lack of a better word, sort of a disconnect with the City Dock Master Plan and what is, and our built environment. And the urgency, you know, I don't want to get on my soapbox here, but the urgency is that there is potential development inevitably happening at City Dock. And then without a plan, it will be driven by just economics, and that doesn't work. So how do we move forward is probably the global question. Sorry about that, about three and a half questions.
Well, so this plan was adopted, it was adopted as an amendment to our comprehensive plan. So every plan development and special exception has to show how, and address how it is consistent with the goals of this plan. Since a lot of the goals are, if not contradictory, at least, you know, there is at least some kind of ambiguity between how one relates to another. You know, a project can show that it's consistent with the goals, even if it's not implementing every single thing that is mentioned in the plan. Because, yes, the exact width of the promenade was not codified. So there's things like that. And we have used it to evaluate special exception projects. And we have also, I'm trying to remember all your other questions. So the studies, I think the status is that it is essentially part of our comprehensive plan. The studies, I think, could they amend the...
Yeah. To get to your stat, I mean, Sally went through some things that were done as part of the implementation. And those were some of the maritime studies, the, you know, some of the parking analysis that were done. So that is sort of some of the status. Some things have been done. There's a lot of things that have not been done. But as, I guess, the biggest issue is that there's a lot of if this, then that in this plan. So there has to be a, the next step of implementing it, which would be a zoning code or text amendment, or another study that has to define what code changes should be done and what is the consensus of that. So to get to, I think Alderwoman Henson's point is that there could be a re-establishment of priorities by this council if we chose to be, so.
Just a, so for it to be used as, when a project comes in, for it to be used sort of as a, it can't be used as code.
It's not code. It's a guiding principle.
It's not code.
So if there's changes to the code that you're making, it should be in concert with what the plan is saying.
In concert, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And should complement what's been, the policies, the guiding principles that are established in that plan.
And some code examples would be stating height restrictions or that kind of thing.
How it's measured, I think is one of the things, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Annett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Nash, for the update, but also bringing back painful memories. You mentioned things like auto-centric, and we need more people space, more shade, more sidewalks. And it reminded me of the huge battle over circle versus T. Because the only way you're going to get more people space and more tree space is if you have less automobile space. And I was looking at that in the original City Dock Plan. And I think, Pete, you're right. This council is going to have to reevaluate this, and we're going to have to make some calls. It's like so many things. It's like the Market House. There's always going to be taste great, light filling, and we're going to have to get on it. But the City Dock Plan was passed a long time ago, and the studies are pretty much done. And I think it is time that we return to this as a policymaking body. We have a new mayor. I was listening to some exciting ideas that he presented at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast this morning. I'm anxious to hear more of those ideas. It's always good to know what we're doing. But I think that there was a sentiment in this last election that we need to break out of the box. We need to make change. I certainly have not been accused of being a ball of fire moving forward with some things, but, I mean, elections do mean something. And I think it was pretty overwhelming what the electorate was saying to us as policymakers. And there's some pretty exciting stuff that can happen in the City Dock Master Plan. And I think we can even make it more exciting. But we need that trigger. And I would just say one other thing. We need to have all of the city on board. One of my pet peeves is the location of the pumping, the pumps for the nuisance flooding, which doesn't seem to pay attention to moving the Harbor Master. You talked about that this morning, moving the Harbor Master building per this plan and thinking about where pumps could go vis-à-vis that. The other thing that is pressing literally on City Dock is sea level rise. And we talk about parking underneath the City Dock in Campbell Park. That has to be integrated with the sea level rise planning. And I will be honest, one of the reasons that I wanted to do this for four more years is because this is exciting stuff. And it's a lot more exciting than doing the budget. It's a lot more exciting than changing the zoning code, because this is something tangible that we'll all see and live. I'm not sure we'll all agree to all of it, but somebody, maybe it was Shinika or maybe you, Ellie, said, you know, change is going to happen whether we want it to or not. Physical change is going to occur, but just our needs are changing. Our needs are moving away from automobiles to driverless cars and Lyft and Uber and things like that. And we need to get with the program to move forward with this. You did a good job getting the PALS studies, and I thank you for reminding me of that because that is good stuff, but we got to use it. Doing it and having it sit on the shelf is just not much fun. I quit if that's all we're going to do. So I want to thank you actually for the whole of this work session, but this update and the PALS information, I think, pretty good stuff. We need to get on it. And we need to give you a budget.
I'm excited because Russ has agreed we're all going to do a road trip to Charleston, right? We're all in, road trip. For the retreat. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was good to hear about the City Dock Plan. I wasn't too familiar with it. And so when was it adopted by this council?
October 2013.
2013, okay. And so that became part of the comprehensive plan, you said? So with the new, I like the idea of the promenade. So was that when the new faucets, well, the redevelopment of the faucet slot was, are they meeting the intention? I haven't seen the plans for that building, but are they meeting the intention of the promenade, the recommended with, her use mentioned something about that, Ellie.
Right. Well, the recommendations in the plan somewhat hinged upon a private partner, private-public partnership and land swap. So you can see the dark blue area was where we imagined the new building would go, thus creating enough room for the promenade in the back. But that didn't happen. So they couldn't really follow the plan because there was, you know, the situation wasn't exactly right. They did show how they were consistent with the principles of the City Dock Master Plan, even though the promenade there is not as wide as it is shown here.
Okay. I'm not quite sure, follow the logic if they're, if they didn't comply with the promenade with how they comply, in compliance with the overall plan. So, I mean, I don't understand that. How could they be in compliance if they didn't?
There are other goals of the City Dock Master Plan that were in place. Also, the City Council had to have purchased this property, the City Council had to take several steps before we could have this kind of configuration of property. And so the implement, the full implementation of this part of the plan hinged on those steps being taken. So maybe Pete can explain.
Is that what's described in the City Dock Master Plan? I mean, it seems, it seems we shouldn't be issuing a certificate of approval of that they've complied with the master plan or the comp plan if they haven't quite.
Couple of dynamics. There was a number of different steps in implementing this plan in order for all those things to occur. Zoning code changes, land swapping, if you will, and it was also based upon a complete redevelopment of the property, meaning tear down and build it back up and all that good stuff. They stayed within the existing footprint of the existing building, and they weren't moving the building in any direction in terms of the footprint of the building. So in order to comply with that, that didn't provide the other opportunities. But there were, as much as we could, as part of the City Dock Master Plan, we make it consistent with those goals outlined in the plan. But if the other parts weren't in play, then we could not enforce the consistency with the plan for the 50-foot-wide promenade.
Okay. I mean, so what about the, the recommended, looks like planting of trees near the building? And in terms of planning for the flood mitigation, was that incorporated into this redevelopment?
As much as we could, yeah. That's what they're, yes, they are.
I mean, couldn't the city just say, no, they're not in compliance yet? I mean...
Well, again, back to the point of, there's a City Dock Master Plan, and of those changes, it's not codified in law. So there's a whole host of principles and suggestions that should be done in terms of the City Dock Master Plan, but it was never, those things were not put into code.
But I thought the comp plan was, I mean, I've heard from Esther Elson, City Attorney Elson, overhear that the comp plan automatically has the force of law.
State law, not city law.
I'd like to clarify that. The comp plan is required to be a consideration and applications for special exceptions by state law. We apply it pursuant to the city code, in other words, consistency with the comp plan and plan development applications. And to that extent, I think it has the force of law. When the state tells us that we have to make decisions that are consistent with the comp plan, otherwise, and, you know, this has been a longstanding problem in interpreting what I said long ago, that that's when I think it has the force of law, when the state code tells us, whatever we do on a certain application, it better be consistent with the comp plan. Otherwise, it's not, it's not, it's something that is, you know, it is consistent of goals and guidance and, you know, recommendations, which I don't think have the force of law. So sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And I think that's what I said originally.
And another question, was a view set, view shed analysis done that says here that...
There was a view shed analysis, yes.
Okay. Are there any other properties that are subject to redevelopment soon down there? I see a couple.
Nice St. Mary's is a lot of redevelopment, you know, Mission Barbecue, whether some redevelopment, I mean, and I don't know what else. I mean, there's, yeah.
The hotel.
Yeah. Phillips.
I mean, it's just a little fresh, because I know even with the planning commission, you know, they're supposed to, everything they review is supposed to be looked under the lens of the comprehensive plan, but if there are all these ifs, ands, and buts, it makes it really difficult to actually adhere to our comprehensive plan.
So think about...
I'll get off my soapbox now.
And the state law has specific guidance on, well, it has specific language on what exactly needs to be consistent with what. It's not everything in the plan we have to do. That's a common misperception.
Alderman Turner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the risk of crosstalk, I just wanted to clarify with Alderman Savage. The faucet's property was not bought yet, and at the time of the City Dock Master Plan, there was this private-public proposal, which very cleanly divided the property up to be in line with the City Dock Master Plan. That didn't happen, so, you know, free market took over and we have private, you know, buyers of faucets. But with this not codified, they took, you know, some liberty. But my question is, could you explain the genesis, I guess, of opportune sites that are defined in the City Dock Master Plan and what the status of those are?
The plan focused on, well, the plan proposed rezoning from the existing WMC to add a new zoning district, which, see Pete cringing over the idea, but it was, and then there was actually two sub-districts within this new district. So the new zoning district would have been called the Waterfront City Dock Zone, and it would be divided up into a mixed-use area, the... it would be divided up into a mixed-use area, the dark blue, and an open-space area, the light blue. And so, that's this side where faucets is, and then this side along Dock Street. So, those were the zoning changes that were envisioned, and the opportunity sites were what was, what is shown in dark blue.
To further simplify the 31st standing classifications.
So, the old rec center wasn't included as an opportune site, correct?
That's right.
Can I direct this to Mr. Elson? I just want to make sure my understanding is correct. When we have our comprehensive plans and city dock master plans, one of their larger purposes is to drive our zoning, so that we kind of take a, kind of, a overview of the city, and then we zone according to what the plans have identified as different uses for different areas. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a plan, is what it is. The comprehensive plan is a plan, go ahead, Pete.
I mean, one of my Planning 101 and Zoning 101 demonstrations is, you have your comprehensive plan, and the implementation of that comprehensive plan is done through zoning and code text. I mean, the zoning classifications themselves and the text amendments itself, or the zoning code itself. And then also technically, you know, implementing that as your capital improvement program and your development review guidelines. So, all of that plays into, and that's when they say it has to be consistent. When you go to zone something, or when you do a zoning code amendment, that has to be consistent with you identified as your policy and guidelines and strategies outlined in your comprehensive plan. And that's what the state, you know, what Gary is talking about, when it has to be, it has the force of law. The force of law comes to you being consistent with the policy that the legislative body adopted when you implement codified laws, you know, into your, into what I now have to regulate. So, what happens, or why this is all about, if, Gary, I'm going to get into the, I play an attorney on television sometimes, I don't know.
Thank you, you're doing a great job.
Is that jurisdictions go outside the boundaries of their comprehensive plan, and they rezone things that were never planned, they were designated for preservation, they were designated for agricultural uses, if you will. And they go in and then they create plan developments on top of that, being completely inconsistent with their comprehensive plan. And that's, you know, and they've done that through legislative matters, and that was not consistent with what they adopted. And having been in a larger jurisdiction before having municipalities, that is a contention that goes on with, this was not consistent with your comprehensive plan, therefore you can't annex this property, or you can't annex this property, and then change it to something else that was not originally planned in your comprehensive plan. So, that, is that better, help you understand where consistency with your comprehensive plan comes from at the state level down to the local level, as to how you implement your comprehensive plan?
Yeah, for the more nuanced measures that are in the comprehensive plan and city dock master plan, is there any way to incorporate them by reference and give them the force of law? I know that our planning and zoning code is multi-layered and complicated enough to navigate, and that would just add yet another layer on there. But is there any way to incorporate some of those elements by reference, or do they have to be codified?
Well, if you want to, if you want to give any provision in the comprehensive plan, the force of law, you would have to do it by an ordinance.
Okay.
You know, so, the ordinance could read, you know, certain section of the comp plan is incorporated into this code, or you could just restate it. But the only way to make it a lawful requirement, other than with respect to consistency, which is already a requirement, you would have to do it by ordinance. So, just to, you know, reiterate for a minute, you know, when Title 21 was, we did the tech changes, the technical changes to Title 21 about two years ago, or three years ago, whatever it was. And we added, we looked through the Title 21, and we saw about five different versions of what had to be done with respect to the comprehensive plan. In other words, it had to be compatible with the plan, it had to be harmonious with the plan. And one or two areas, it said consistent with the plan, which is what the state requires. And Sally, can you remember the other two? I think there were two more versions of what...
Compatible.
Yeah, compatibility, harmonious, and...
And harmony with...
Consistent, and whatever the other two were, I think there were five altogether. Yes. So, what we did is we changed everything to consistent, to be consistent with state law. So, right now, I think we have more things in our code that, which require consistency with the comp plan than the state tells us to do, so we're more, we're stricter, I think, in requiring consistency. But as Pete said, that's when it's a legal requirement, when some law says that what you are considering, when you approve it, has to be consistent with the comp plan. That's when it gets to be, you know, the equivalent of a law. But in answer to your question, yeah, you could...
It's cleaner to do it by codification, because the issue is, is that you have a general statement in a plan, let's take economic development and environmental protection, the two can compete with each other. So, you have to, you have to balance what the hell, what those two, how those two policies or guidings or recommendations is, what they're talking about, how that is achieved. And that's how you do it, through the zoning code, how you balance economic development with environmental protections, and protecting your resources. So, there's those kinds of things that go on in a comprehensive plan, that you have to put in a code in order to make it clean as to what it is. Not that you can't reference certain things, like design guidelines, they can be referenced by code, you don't have to adopt that, you have to codify all the design guidelines. They can be done by rules and regulations or in that manner, and be referenced by code, and therefore they do carry, you know, like forest conservation, you know, forest conservation manual. That has the effect of a law, but what it does is gives you options. These are the options, if this, then these are the three things you can do. You don't want to put that in a code, but you make it, you make those guidelines or that manual, you reference that, and this is how you do that. So, to give you an example of how you can reference a document in code?
We did have an ordinance drafted for the city dock master plan. In addition to these map changes, we had proposed other changes in the bulk regulations, table of uses, how height is measured. So, we were proposing to measure it from base flood elevation instead of grade for all properties in the flood plain. And we created a new type of plan development. So, those were the kinds of ideas that we had, you know, in 2013 about how to start implementing this. Also, changing, so moving some of these property, the opportunity areas into a different height district, so they could have more height, and... There's my long flood discussion. And also eliminating billboards. Very popular.
Alderman Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, Dr. Nash, you should show your flood elevation thing. But my question is, when is the comprehensive plan scheduled to be updated? And that begs the question on how this all ties in. I mean, are we doing the trickle-up theory or the trickle-down? I mean, are you, are you updating the comprehensive plan and then tying the city dock into that? Or can we work on the city dock master plan with the hope that, you know, sort of independently? Peter knows what I'm asking, I think.
I do. And because I've had recent discussions about what's been going on and what's been used in certain applications. Your comprehensive plan is your overall guiding document for any other plan, and what you do forward, in terms of policies and recommendations and all that good stuff. So, if there are things in previous plans and studies that are still applicable, you need to bring that forward or reference them in your comprehensive plan update. Otherwise, there's things in those plans, if you will, and or studies, that are not applicable anymore today. So, you have to differentiate what's applicable and what's not applicable. Otherwise, you could have a 30-year-old plan that's still going to be applied to something 30 years later that's not even applicable anymore. And it basically had that situation happen to us. So, I want to make that clear, as we move forward in the update of the comprehensive plan, that we would either take those aspects of those other plans and bring them forward into that plan, or leave them behind, and that's yesteryear, and this is today. And that's, you know, the way I've done it my whole 30-year career. So, in terms of timeline, we're scheduled to do it in 2019, subject to budget. I'm just kidding. But we are moving forward and trying to upstart the comprehensive plan update. 2019's when it's due. There's some issues with, you know, in 2020, you have a whole host of data that will be available to you through the census, that really could be some guiding principles, but we can, we can move forward without it at this point in time. So, we are pressing.
Just lastly, well, for me, I, would you be receptive, just because of the urgency of sea level rise, is one way of doing this is to introduce the ordinance as general as it might be, because it includes about, you know, five different things, and then let it go through the democratic process? Would that be a good way of re, I'm trying to re-elevate the city dock master plan, the best way of doing that? And could it be an ordinance, but subject to a lot of revision and discussion and conversation? Is that a way to get it engaged again?
It's just your choice.
I'm throwing that out there. I mean, I'd be willing to support that, Ross.
I was going to say, we might do it as an overlay. Have to explore that with office law and planning zone.
Great, you're killing Pete.
Come on, so you take...
Another overlay!
I think we would want to look at the zoning and how we want to do that carefully, because, you know, the whole compromise side isn't really relevant anymore. So, we, I think we can probably think of new solutions.
Just because you have a comprehensive plan coming along, it doesn't mean you can't introduce legislation and make amendments to the existing zoning code. That happens all the time. You can continue to move things forward as you evaluate and reevaluate existing studies, plans, and...
Well, because, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if we have anything codified on raising the buildings yet, do we? That's pretty important, so that should be code.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'm on it.
So, I can keep using my diagram.
Okay, I want to thank everybody on the city council who worked so hard on the city dock master plan, you guys, no, you guys bled for that, the citizens out there and all the city staff, thank you. It came up a lot during the election, people are ready for some re-energization of our city dock, so I think that, you know, it's on us to act on this. So, thank you. So, Mr. City Attorney, any items on the agenda?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the agenda is completed.
All right.
Thank you, Planning Zoney.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. And thank you both for updating us and helping us to, I guess, get up to snuff on what the potential still exists for us. And Pete, your job's cut out for you.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Andrews, I'd like to make a request that the next work session include a presentation from Mr. Gerald on our CIP.
Okay.
Capital improvement projects.
Okay. Do I have to say something?
Mr. Gerald?
Mr. Gerald just left, yeah.
Mr. Gerald.
He just left?
He escaped, but he can't go far, so it's okay.
Do I say?
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Finlayson, we'll get that on, I'll consult with David Gerald, we'll get it on the next thing, okay? Thank you. All right, so just got to wrap it up with, is there anything else for good order?
Just a second, we have to...
Okay, session is adjourned. Thank you so much, thank you for the general public for coming out, thank you, thank you for city employees for looking interested.